For the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, created and just as a.
So we have a couple of announcements this evening. The Recreation Department is holding a community outreach meeting on Wednesday, April 26th at 7:00 PM via Zoom to present the Norcross Park Inclusive Playground Project to be voted on at town meeting. Project and meeting information can be found at tinyurl.com/norcrossparkplayground. The town of Grafton is proud to introduce its first townwide curbside composting program in partnership with Black Earth Composting. The first 500 residents who sign up will receive a free composting starter kit. Visit grafton-ma.gov/855/composting for more information. First up on the agenda, we have a couple of public hearings. If you don't mind reading the notice for the Class II Auto License.
The Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 18th, 2023, to hear citizen comments on the application of Anderson Maria Saldana, Trade Auto Sales, Inc., for a Class II Auto License located at 21 Truesberry Street, North Grafton, MA. The beginning, the meeting begins at 7:00 PM in Conference Room A of the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, located at 30 Providence Road. Remote participation may be available and the meeting link will be posted to the April 18th, 2023 Agenda. Interested citizens are invited to attend the public hearing and to offer any written or oral comments. Written comments must be received by noon Wednesday, April 12th, 2023. Grafton Select Board published in the Grafton News, March 30th, 2023, and April 6th, 2023, as well as the Town Bulletin Board.
I can take a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. So we are now officially in the public hearing. Do I have anyone here or on Zoom that would like to speak to this? Is Maria on Zoom?
I am her husband, Anderson.
Would you like to come up to the mic and introduce yourself, please?
Yes. Hi.
Hey.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Anderson. I have a dealer in Houston. And it's a kind of high street and I rent a place in Grafton. I spoke to the owner before I, before I signed the contract. He says not going to be a problem to have a dealer here move to Grafton. And that's why I'm here to get approved to, you know, run my business. I have a family, two daughters. And that's why I'm here. I never have touched one meeting like that. But it's the first time. I'm kind of shy here.
You're doing great. All right, does the board have any questions?
Anderson, are you anticipating any changes at all to the existing business?
No, no, I own a, gonna resell, buy cars and resell.
Yeah.
Cars, I have my mechanic in Houston.
Okay.
I'm gonna do all the service in there and bring the car to, to the parking lot. Then I resell the car, only that's, I'm not gonna fix or change oil in there.
Okay, got it, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Is this the location where there's currently a car shop?
Once before.
Yeah, okay, just so I know, yeah, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Administratively, on page six of the packet, it looks like the last, one of the last pages of the application, it just, it doesn't have a signature on there currently. I don't know if that was part of our, you know, pre-packet or what, or if that affects anything, but I just wanted to flag that.
Uh, nope, you're still, you're still good. You can vote tonight and if that is an issue, I will have that cleaned up. Thank you.
All right, so this is a public hearing. Does anybody in the audience or on Zoom like to speak to this? Okay.
No one is on Zoom.
All right, I can take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, motion made seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried.
I move the board vote to approve a Class II Auto License for Anderson and Maria Saldana of Trade Auto Sales, Inc., located at 21 Truesberry Street, North Grafton.
Second, motion made seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. Congratulations.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you, thank you very much. I have to stay to the end or?
Nope. But you can.
You're more than welcome.
Take, take me with you. Take me with you, please.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Good luck.
We do have a second public hearing for a pole petition by National Grid on Institute Road. Do we have anybody on Zoom for that?
No.
Okay, so.
Move forward.
I think so.
Yep. The Select Board will hold a public hearing on the request of National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc. for permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, Institute Road. National Grid to install seven JO poles on Institute Road and remove two JO poles on West Border Road, beginning at a point approximately 40 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Institute Road and continuing approximately 1,000 feet in the south direction. Install seven new poles with three anchors and guys. Replace two poles, two anchors, and one pole to pole guy wire. The public hearing will be held on April 18th, 2023, in Conference Room A of the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, located at 30 Providence Road and via Zoom, starting at 7:00 PM. The Zoom link will be posted on the April 18th, 2023 Select Board Agenda. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment. Any wishing, anyone wishing to attend in person or via Zoom, Grafton Select Board posted to the Town Bulletin Board, as well as the Grafton News, March 30th, 2023, and April 6th, 2023. And I move the board, open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, declare the public hearing open. We do not have a representative from National Grid. Is there anybody in the audience or on Zoom that would like to speak to this? Okay, does the board have any comments? All right, I can take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried.
I move the board vote to approve and sign the Institute Road Pole Petition by National Grid.
Second, motion made seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. Up next are appointments and we have first the Veteran Advisory Committee. We have Richard Kirjik. If you'd like to come up to the microphone, please. How are you this evening?
I'm marvelous.
Excellent. So if you could tell us a little bit about yourself, how you got interested in being on the Veteran Advisory Committee?
I was, I was contacted by one of the members on the committee now telling me that there was an opening with Jim's passing. And I'm a veteran and, and I just thought it would be good. I've spent 30 years on the Board of Health and, and so I kind of miss coming here.
Understand that feeling. All right, does the board have any questions or comments?
No, thanks for your continued service and you're always welcome. Whether you're on a board or committee or whatever.
I'll watch it on TV.
Okay.
All right.
I move the board vote to appoint Richard Kirjik to the Veterans Advisory Committee.
Second, motion made seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Up next, we have the Grafton Housing Authority Tenant Seat with David Callahan.
Good evening, all.
Good evening, how are you?
Hi, David.
I'm well, thank you. Apparently I've been selected to be the tenant rep for Grafton Housing Authority, which they had never had before, as far as I know. Actually, I was the only one that applied for it. So here I am.
Did everyone else take one step back?
Yeah.
I'm gonna be meeting with Amanda Brady at 1:00 Thursday to go over my duties and responsibilities.
Wonderful.
And I look forward to doing, I mean, I don't know exactly what I was supposed to be doing, but I'm gonna find out. You know, I don't know if you guys know or not, there was a small fire on Snow Road. Somebody threw a cigarette butt last week into how dry it was, into the mulch, and it, the vinyl fence melted, one piece of it did. So you drive by and look and wonder why it's not there, that's the reason why. But I've lived at 11, 11D Snow Road for the last six years now. And I'm familiar with a lot of the people, I don't know all of them, it's impossible to know them all. And I, I kind of keep an eye on what goes on, you know, I don't, I'm not a rat. I'm not gonna report somebody. But there are some violations that I see that need to be corrected, you know?
All right.
Other than that, you know, I'm here.
Great, I'm sure you're gonna do a great job. Does the board have any questions or comments?
No, just thanks for stepping up. Appreciate it. Thank you for stepping up.
Oh, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
I was kind of surprised when I got it in the mail and I was even more surprised when Lisa Kelly told me, you're the only one that applied for it. Out of all, all the Grafton housing, that's a lot of housing, you know? Could, I got a question to ask, maybe you can't answer it. Is it, is a construction project going on on Institute Road? Now, I always thought that was state land, right across from the state hospital. Apparently I was wrong.
Note, the state has been divesting of property.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay, I was just curious, because I went by it today and it seems to get bigger and bigger every time you go by it, you know?
Yep.
I don't know how many units are supposed to go in there, but it's definitely gonna affect the, the fire and police department and the schools. So that's something, you know, the taxpayers have to think about, you know? Whether they have a say in the matter or not, it's another story.
All right, well, thank you for the question. Do I have a motion?
Sure, I move the board vote to appoint David Callahan to the Tenant Seat of the Grafton Housing Authority.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. Congratulations and best of luck.
Well, I don't know if congratulations is the right term, but I'm gonna try and help, that's all I'm gonna try and do.
Excellent.
Thank you for your time.
That's all we can ask.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
So up next, we have ZBA Alternates. We have a, three people looking to fill this spot, so we will start with Jiffy Thomas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Same drill, just introduce myself?
Yep.
Okay, I'm a resident and off of Adams Road. We moved here around 2017. And I just happened to be looking in the town website and I saw this position. Thought I'd contribute, help in some way. So here I am.
Very nice. Any questions or comments from the board?
Are you familiar with ZBA, like their, their charge and their purview, kind of what they do?
I've read up a little bit on it, but I'm kind of new to the entire process, but that's where I wanted to volunteer my time and learn through that process too.
Okay, yeah, it's a good place to start.
Any other questions or comments?
I appreciated the notes in his resume, it seemed like, you know, he mentioned both the ZBA and the Planning Board, and having some experience and reaching out for, you know, personal projects, so it was good, good background info. Thank you.
Just want to give something back to the town.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Up next, we have Nicole Berger. Okay, moving right along to Beverly Goslin. Nobody's on Zoom.
Nope.
So the way we typically do this is we interview candidates and candidates are notified to show up to this meeting. As far as I know, we did not receive correspondence from the other two applicants that they would not be here. Keeping that in mind, I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to appoint Jiffy Thomas as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second, motion made seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. Congratulations.
Thanks for coming out.
Thanks for serving.
Up next, we have Conservation Commission Emily Hertzfeld.
Uh, yep, let me just.
Hey, everyone, I'm.
Hi, Emily, how are you?
We can hear you.
How are you? Any chance you can turn my camera on remotely?
We're gonna promote Emily to a panelist and she should be able to turn the camera on.
Hi, everyone, I'm Emily Hertzfeld. I'm sorry I'm not there in person, my schedule just made that hard tonight. I've been in Grafton for about two and a half years. I live on Elmark Drive and really care about how, what we can do to take care of the earth, since it's our only planet, and how we do a better job of taking care of our conservation lands, so that I would volunteer for this role.
Very nice, thank you so much. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Love to see people passionate about it, so.
Absolutely. All right, well, hearing none, I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to appoint Emily Hertzfeld to the Conservation Commission.
Second, motion made seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. Congratulations, Emily.
Thank you, that was easy.
Thank you for serving.
Absolutely.
Have a good night.
You too.
Uh, we have some town administrator appointments for cemetery caretakers.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointments of Scott Hutchins and Christopher Alex as cemetery caretakers for the town of Grafton.
Second, motion made seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, declare the motion carried. All right, up next, we have one, two one-day beer and wine licenses for Apple Tree Arts. We have Ms. Spiny here to go over both of those. Is there anything, anything particular you'd like me to say or just introduce both of them, give a summary? Yeah, you can promote each event, get everybody excited about it.
Okay, the first event is on Thursday, April 26th. It's one of our renters of the facility. As you know, the Great Hall is available for rentals. This is one of our renters and through our events director, they have asked to serve beer and wine at that event. It's a psychic who's coming to the Great Hall. And so it looks to be a good event and so they're just looking for beer and wine that night. Do you want me to move on to the next one or?
Sure.
Okay, so the next one is the full bar license, so all alcohol license. It's for the Great Hall Gala, which is Apple Tree Arts' biggest fundraiser of the year. It's our fourth annual Great Hall Gala. This year is themed Welcome to Bourbon Street. It was the event that we tried to have in 2020 and were shut down a few days before we, we were able to have it, so it's back. This is, so we had it, 20, we started this event in 2017 and we're excited to finally bring it back. We have live music, including brass, Bourbon Street Brass Band, The Violin Cat and Stephanie Sarkisian. We have hors d'oeuvres, we have desserts, we have, of course, we're trying to get the, the open bar and all the catering is by Pepper's Artful Events. So we also submitted along with the application for the one-day alcohol permit, their license. So they'll be putting together the bar and serving at this event as well. And we have a big silent auction with about 40 great items for that and it's gonna be a fun event. It's April 29th, starts at 6:00 for anyone who bought VIP tickets and we still have general admission tickets available as well. By either, you can either get them online, find our Facebook page, Nudge Me, or you can call the Apple Tree Arts office at 508-839-4286.
Awesome, thank you so much. Does the board have any questions about either of those events? All right, hearing none, I can take a couple of motions.
I move the board vote to approve a one-day beer and wine license for Apple Tree Arts on April 26th, 2023.
Second, motion made seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried.
I move the board vote to approve an all, a one-day all-alcohol license for Apple Tree Arts on April 29th, 2023.
Second, motion made seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. Congratulations, hope you have successful events.
Hope to see you all there.
Up next is to review the article submitted by Citizens Petition. First up is Article 34, Resolution in Support of Changing the Flag and Seal of Massachusetts. Hello.
Hello, how is everybody tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, good, thank you. Um, my name's Chantel Kimble, I'm Bigelow Way. First up, I want to just say thank you very much for the time tonight to kind of get this warrant article out there, get some feedback before town meeting. I know your agendas are pretty full and your calendars are pretty full, especially this time of year. In short, Article 34 acknowledges the history of colonization and genocide here in Massachusetts. It spells out specifically how this history is clearly and intentionally represented in our state seal and subsequently on our state flag. And it calls on our state leadership to move forward with the creation of a new state seal and state flag. The specific language of the resolution was developed with the input of current tribal members, very specifically Brittany Wally, who's a member of the Nitmuck Tribe and also on the Special Commission evaluating the state seal and state flag. Revamped the language a little bit to make it Grafton-specific as well. So we have had all of that feedback. There's a ton of information available on the topic and I find it a little overwhelming to try to figure out like how to bundle it in a small enough package for this kind of a forum. So I do definitely want to make sure that I lead and finish by providing some additional sources where anyone who's interested can get a little bit more information. So the first is changemastflag.com. There's a lot of easy-to-digest information diagrams and videos, including some Native Voices that are very powerful. The second invitation I'd like to extend is to the public meeting at Grafton Public Library, which will take place on Monday, April 24th, 2023, at 7, from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. And we will have one of the coordinators of the Change the Mast Flag project there presenting that evening and answering questions. He's in a lot of the videos and, and a very moving speaker. Indigenous leaders have been calling for this change for over 50 years. For nearly 40 years, there have been efforts in the state legislator, legislature that have stalled out repeatedly without really moving forward. Finally, in 2021, the legislature overwhelmingly approved a bill to establish a special commission and the commission includes legislators, historians, and representatives from the Nitmuck, Massachusetts, and Wampanoag nations. And this commission has been, was first charged with evaluating the state seal to determine whether a change was needed, which unanimously they determined it was. And then to recommend a new design. That said, there have been some delays along the way. Initially, they didn't have funding, then they got a little bit of funding to hire a designer and do that kind of work. And then, but by the time they got that funding, then their charge expired. So at the very end of March, I think it might have even been March 30th or March 31st, the deadline was finally extended. So now they're just in the process of kind of regrouping so that they can do that next phase, that design work. And they have a new deadline of November 15th, 2023, to make final design recommendations to the legislature. Given the fits and starts that this initiative has already experienced, this resolution and the reason for bringing it to town meeting at this time sends a clear message to our state leaders that the town of Grafton supports this change and to really push them to continue this forward momentum. 57 communities have already held formal votes in support of the resolution and approximately another two dozen, including Grafton, have similar votes scheduled this spring. Given that the land now known as Grafton shares such a long history with the Nitmuck Tribe, it feels especially important to honor them by adding our voices to the many in support of this important change. So just to remind again, we will have that informational meeting on April 24th, 7 to 8:30 at the library. And I'd like to leave you with a thought that I heard in one of those videos on changemastflag.com. It was expressed by Brittany Wally, she did it way better than I can. But basically, if we really all take a few minutes to think about what Massachusetts means to us, what are the special things about our state, what are the really great things about our state and what do we want people to think of when they see our flag, when they see our seal? I doubt that our history of genocide and colonization are like the things that, that come to mind. And it's time for new imagery that really helps to celebrate what we are proud of and more importantly, sort of the things that unify all of the diverse people here in Massachusetts. So with that, thank you for your time and I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for coming in. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Thanks for organizing the informational session, I think that's really important. And I, I think, you know, overall, it's a great. I'm generally a little bit on the fence with resolutions, because I'm never quite sure. Sometimes they come from organizations that I'm not that familiar with and, but this is a great one to partner with other towns to give the state a very clear message of what our expectations are, so thanks for organizing it.
Any other questions or comments? Great, thank you so much, look forward to town meeting. Article 35 will be passing over, the petitioner will not be attending tonight and up next is the land acknowledgement.
What about the clerk?
We had early voting with the town clerk.
Oh, it's not the right, so sorry Candy. Up next is early voting with the town clerk. Yeah, he glaze right over that, huh?
It would have been a good segue, but it's all right.
Hello, again.
Hi.
So I'm not sure if Dan is on Zoom, but Dan said he was going to be part of this too, if we can make him accessible. So I'm just here with an update from the last meeting that we discussed the local election and the options that we have. And it was mentioned that the board would like us to consider early voting, which had to be recommended by at least two registrars. So we held a meeting on the 13th and after long discussion, thorough discussion and, you know, hearing input from others, the board has recommended not to have early voting for the local election for this year. We can get more into specifics if you want. Next year being a presidential year, we're going to have to offer it anyways for the, all the elections. So after hearing, you know, a couple of people speak and just going over information that, you know, we, you know, collected like for mail-in voting from past elections and whatnot, the board decided not to hold that.
Okay, is mail-in voting considered early voting or not?
Kind of, it's no excuse voting. So it's, it's absentee voting in Massachusetts, you have to have certain reasons to do that. So this gives anybody the option to vote no matter what. So they can just apply for a ballot and we'll mail that out to them and then they can go and, you know, return that at their leisure before 8:00 PM on Election Day.
Okay, so that will still be available?
Absolutely, yep.
Now, typically, would the timeline have been the registrars met prior to coming to Select Board versus like, did we just do it backwards this time where you came to us and then?
No, so what happened is we had a registrar meeting before I came and we discussed it as a group and, you know, I recommended looking at data that we should just do the mail-in voting, being a local election and listening to what other towns were doing. Most opted out of mail-in voting and actually a few opted to do neither. So looking at our trends, you know, mail-in voting seemed to get the more turnout for people. So the registrars were like, all right, whatever, you know, you recommend and, you know, discussing it. Then I came here and that's when the board was like, no, we want to see, you know, early voting as well. So I had to have another meeting because the new legislation said that at least two of the registrars had to recommend it, so we had to hold another one. And now I'm back following up.
Okay, so with the follow-up, do we have the ability to push forward anyway or no?
No.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No, I mean, I'm disappointed, but I understand it was 3-0 was the vote, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, I think at this point, the, you know, the, the work is to make sure that it's properly messaged so that people understand exactly. And, and you've always been good about advertising that, but that's, that's important this year.
Yep, so we discussed it, you know, today was kind of a busier day and being the first day back from the meeting. So we're gonna draft something to put out there for everybody so they know what their options are. And, you know, just, you know, we're there too, if anybody has questions. But the local election has not had early voting in general. It was mail-in voting the last time anyway, so this will, you know, honestly, there's no consistency with that anyway. So next year, like I said, with all the elections, we're gonna have to do it anyway, so it makes more sense to, you know, do that. And then timing, it just, it was a little crazy timing-wise going back and forth, to be honest, so.
So we didn't do early voting last local election?
It was mail-in only.
In, oh, okay.
Yep. So that was something we discussed.
It was in person as well.
It was in person as well, though.
There, for other elections. Yes, we did, but we, we did not, the, this was twenty twenty was the first year. That we had the uh mail-in uh, the local elections and it was mail-in only.
But twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two had early voting at the local elections, correct?
No. Twenty twenty-two, last year, we, I don't know, I don't have my data with me. I didn't bring it this time, I'm sorry. Um, but no, it was mail-in only. We didn't have any, um, those were all the other elections that we had, we had to have it. So. I believe I, I have the data. So I, I think after looking at twenty twenty-two, we did not have it. In there, if I remember, it was just the mail-in voting again. So of course, I'm not prepared, so I'm sorry.
No problem. I think that was why we were excited for, because we wanted consistency, but now you're saying that.
It was, yeah, mailing. Yep. No, we didn't have it. It was mail-in vote, excuse me, mail-in voting. There we go. Mail-in voting. Um, so it wasn't, that's what we did, because I think we had the option. Uh, to do mailing or nothing and we did the mail-in.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I would just say as clear as you can have it on the website, because I feel like I was looking even at it and wasn't entirely clear.
So what we might.
Bullet them to, you know, you can, anytime you want, you can come up and get it or whatever the mail-in process is and then go on to the next one.
I think we talked about that because the state um drafted a new, I'm sorry, a new um application as well, where it can be the whole family. On um one ballot or one application. So there's the regular one and then that one. So we discussed that at the meeting too, where. There's a couple of options um that they've tried to make it a little more, I guess streamlined. So um, we're, we'll probably just make like, um. I don't know if we can just maybe do like a tab or something on the front or something where it's just like early voting information, um. Mail-in voting and whatnot and, and give all the options. So we'll be discussing that, but we did say that we wanted to um, you know, get as much information out there as possible. And so we will work on something.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for coming in.
Alright, that was easy enough. And I will be in touch. Thank you.
Candy, I just have a question. Sorry, I wasn't sure what else. Um, on the, so last time we voted on an interim registrar, right?
Yes.
And my understanding is that's an issue or.
That's still, we're working on.
Terminology, okay.
Yes, we're working on that. So I think we're just waiting to touch base with Ginny. So, yep, we'll be, we'll be back on that.
And then we would potentially revote that with the correct terminology?
So the deadline for the Republican Town Committee is April twenty-eighth, so. For them to um submit names and I think that they have at least one person interested. So we'll figure, you know, this week I hope to, to finally get in touch with her and, and get that squared away.
But more like the gentleman that we appointed. The terminal, the terminology that we used was incorrect, so.
I believe so.
We might have to change that, okay.
Yep.
I don't think we will have to change it.
No.
Well, you voted to have it expire on May second. Your next meeting is May second.
Alright.
So it'll work itself out.
Okay, alright.
And we were able to have our meeting, so.
Yeah, we, Candy had come to me that, that morning.
That person wasn't there though, right?
Correct.
Anyway, so that kind of works out.
Well, we decided to go that route.
Okay.
Because of the issue that was raised regarding the language. So it was just. Just better to, we had, Candy had quorum anyways, so it, it turned out to not be necessary.
Yeah, so, we'll figure that one out though. Alright, thank you.
Alright, up next is land acknowledgement.
Yeah, so uh as I, I shared with the rest of the board, um, or I shared with Amber, who shared with the rest of the board. Uh, we have the final feedback on our proposed land acknowledgement and I passed along some of the messages I received from. Both Cheryl, Cheryl Holly and Jennifer Vickers, who we worked with on, on both pieces. Um, you know, locally and, and uh representing the national Nitmuck group. Um, so. I brought it back, excuse me, with um, with the amended edits that were suggested. Um, as I noted, Ms. Vickers also suggested that we share, she, she provided some language, but um. The gist of it is uh kind of a summary of how we work through this process as a board when, before we present. The acknowledgement itself, um, you know, a, a note about how the, the reflection that went into it. Um, and, you know, the, the personal feelings and what we learned along the way, which I thought was. Um, worthwhile if, if the board's open to that, um, just if only because we have a, a larger audience at town meeting. Um, and that may not have been along with us throughout this process and, and be fully aware of what went into it.
Great. Any questions or comments? Nope. Okay, so is everybody comfortable with the language as is and moving forward with reading it at town meeting?
Yep, yep.
Fantastic. Should we nominate who would read that? Because personally, I would feel really comfortable with uh Andy. Um, he spearheaded a lot of this to, to get to read the first one at town meeting.
Second.
Agreed. Excellent. Alright. Um, so do we need to take an official motion to? Uh, accept the language for the land acknowledgement?
Sure. Uh, I move with the board vote to accept the land acknowledgement as amended.
Second.
Motion main seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed to clear the motion carried.
Thank you guys for letting me read it too.
Yeah, of course. You did a lot of hard work. Uh, up next is close and sign the town meeting warrant.
Move the board vote to close the annual town.
Hold on, hold.
Oh, sorry.
Do you wanna, do you wanna review any of it? Does anybody have any questions?
I feel pretty good about it.
Okay.
How does the, so who comes up with the consent agenda? Like which articles get?
William and I.
Okay. Um, and then kind of not, not related to the work per se, but the um, the clear gov. Tab or on the website, is that live and bringing people? Because I just noticed in the finance committee report, it specifically. You know, said that that's successful to everybody and that is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Been up for.
I tried today and I couldn't get through.
I will double check in case there's a.
Okay.
An issue that we're not aware of, but it has been.
Just in reading their report, it led me to go ahead and give it a try and it wasn't successful.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thanks.
I do know that the, the, people have been accessing it because they've been telling me that they're accessing it.
Okay. And I can pull it up after and see if it's something on my end. Thanks.
Alright, any other questions or comments?
And also can you amend your motion to close the warrant and vote to sign?
I move the board vote to close the town, the annual town meeting warrant and sign uh for. Our meeting on May eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion main seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I propose to clear the motion carried. Do we have any select board reports? Moving right along to town administrator reports.
Okay, here we go. Alright, so budget process. Just kind of wrapped it up right there. Um, finance committee hearings, we've completed those as of last Thursday. Um, we did receive new information regarding the cherry sheets of the house budget increased. Um, Grafton share by roughly eight, eighty-eight thousand, eighty-eight five, somewhere in there. Um, we'll wait and see what the Senate's come back, uh, Senate's comes back as. Um, so without that eighty-eight thousand, our current capacity is a hundred and thirty-three thousand, reminding everyone that that is with our. Uh, low uh estimates for revenue. Um, and reminding everybody that we have the logistics meeting May, April twenty-sixth at seven PM and that'll be via Zoom only. Um, should be pretty short. We've worked out most all of the logistics uh already. Okay, so I wanted to talk about pickleball for a minute. This is a, this is a hot topic. It's at least half of my inbox these days. Um, but I wanted to thank the rec department. So the rec department's been doing a ton of work. Um, and the response they have gotten has not been the most pleasant always. Um, a lot of the emails, eh, there was a few emails last week that asked why the project of redoing the pickleball courts was so hush, hush. And done behind closed doors. Um, so I just wanted to talk about what rec did for this particular project, so. Um, they sent out fifty-seven hundred emails on two different dates. Um, of those fifty-seven hundred emails, seventy people took a short survey about what they'd like to see for Grafton pickleball. Um, they discussed the, the changes to the pickleball uh courts. At rec commission meetings, they've been in our weekly reports, they've been on Facebook, they've been on a website, on a project page. It has its own page that. Uh, Jen created that, that actually came out very nice. I, I like it. Um, and they put signage onsite. And so they're making some, some changes to the layout and the number of courts and, and a whole bunch of other things. Uh, I'm not a pickleball person, so I don't know all of the ins and outs. I know that there's an issue with people having concerns about sidelines. Um, and so Jen has uh been reaching out to people individually to try to get. Some input and consensus, uh, because in, in theory, the project's supposed to start next week. So, um, you know, we have uh the contractor lined up and, and. Like all these things in municipal government, if we, if we miss our window, then we don't know when we come back up in the queue. Um, but I did just wanna give a shout out to the recreation department. They've been doing a, a ton of work in general. Grafton Recreation does a heck of a job for, for the number of people that they have and the human capital, see, bringing that up again. Um, that they're, that they're able to, to utilize, so. Um, you know, just really wanna highlight their, their efforts and also, uh, you know, just say thank you in general.
Nice.
They were doing the Sweethearts Dance last week. Um, so that was pretty fun. Uh, I got to hang out with them a little bit while we were talking about pickleball. So, um. But yeah, they're doing great things. Sorry, well, go ahead. Rambling. Um, so other updates, so we had received some um. Some complaints near the Prentice uh place construction. Um, about water on the two properties that are below Prentice Place. Um, after some review, I participated in a site walk with uh Mr. Canoyer, our engineer. Um, and Mr. Berger and um, we're able to actually work with the Grafton Water Department and. We believe that the issue is actually a um. Breakout in the street um for their water line that goes to an existing building. So uh, we believe that that's pushing. Potable water into the ground, which is then seeping up behind the two, two properties. Uh, we believe that one because uh Grafton Water District uh personnel can hear that there is a, a break somewhere. Um, and when we tested the water in each of those properties, it tested positive for chlorine. So it seems like that is what the issue is. Um, so um. Looking to get that resolved by hopefully Wednesday or Thursday this weekend. That should take care of a lot of the. The issue or at least shift our focus into what else is happening on that property. Um, we met with the paving contractor last Monday to review the municipal center parking lot. Uh, we're hopeful to have all of the project information uh by the end of this week and. Uh, fingers crossed, we would be paving in May at some point. Um, so I did, I did that walkthrough with uh Paul Canoyer, Brian Zizurko and Shannon from the senior center. Shannon Smith. Um, and so we're gonna put a couple of drainage improvements in and we're gonna widen the parking lot in a number of, of places to try to get. Uh, better turning radius behind the senior center as well as where the parents park at the top of the hill here. That just make it a little bit easier to navigate for people. Um, we're also gonna choke down the spots around the speed bumps for the people that drive straight across the lawn so that they don't have to go over the speed bump, so. Gonna make that a little more interesting for folks. Um.
Big granite curbs? What are you gonna do?
No, we're doing, it, it's a Cape Cod burn.
Okay.
Which I just learned what that is. It's just an asphalt hump. They just fancy it up. Um, but yeah, now that, yeah, it's just, it happens quite a bit. You look out the window and somebody's. Real close to the building. Um. Mostly mad, but we'll let it go. Um, alright, so I held the office hours at the senior center. Uh, it was a little slow this month, but we were able to uh, to solve a couple of issues for folks. Um, I, that's literally my favorite part of the whole month. Um, I, I, I uh helped a, a woman get a pothole filled in front of her house. Which is what we, we do, but she was super happy with it. So that's always fun. Um, Will attended the dull men's club. Um, I was supposed to go, but I'm not dull enough, so he said, Will. You wanna talk about that, Will?
It was not dull. It was very exciting. But a, a group of older gentlemen who meet at the senior center uh every other Wednesday, I wanna say, and. Just went down, spoke to them for about forty-five minutes about various projects around town and they were very appreciative of the one-on-one interactions.
Cool.
Awesome. Want to talk about the MVP grant?
Well, that was more dull than the dull men's club, but. Uh, so we had our first meeting with Fiona, Paul Canoyer and myself to talk about the MVP grant for George Hill Road. We have a pretty good plan of attack, I think, and we're pursuing that aggressively because the deadline is coming up rapidly. Um, but I, I have high hopes about that. I think we'll be able to get the application in on time.
Great. And I attended the Mass Chiefs annual trade show.
Well, before, before we move on, um, is there any impediment or anything that might be a blocker to getting that in on time?
Uh, just the fact that it is a massive grant application.
Yeah.
Um, and we have the twenty percent plans, the ten percent plans.
Ten percent.
The ten percent plans, uh, and so we're not sure if those are gonna meet the specifications of the grant. Um, we're not sure if they want the full completed designs or if the ten percent plans will work. Um, so, so small things like that, but we are proceeding as though we have everything we need. Because we figure worst case scenario, we get everything in on time and, you know, they gave us a short extension to do something else.
Got it. And we can always apply next year.
You, you can.
Um. It's just such an important part of the financing for this project.
I agree. I think that um, from what I've seen in the past, they will give you a grant with the ten percent plan. With the caveat that you have to bring the full plan back um to just make sure you remained within the project parameters. Um, so I, I don't, I don't see anywhere where that has, that has changed, but. Eh, either way, we, we are not gonna have hundred percent plans by May fourth, so, or even seventy or ninety, so.
Okay.
Um, we're gonna do what we, what we've gotta do. Um, I attended the Mass Chiefs annual trade show. Uh, that is a trade show put on, geez, man, by the Mass Chiefs. Obviously. Uh, it's basically uh all the cops, uh new technology, um, different cars, different kinds of lights. Um, met a guy that designs bike frames that I hike with in Munson that I didn't know that's what he did. It's pretty, pretty random. Um, but it was, it, it's a, it's a good show. Um, deputy chief and chief brought me along because I'm the money guy. Um, but, but no, it was, it was really good. There, there was a lot of uh, a lot of really neat technology around. Active shooter, active shooter training, um, and um. Virtual training as opposed to live, live training. So it was pretty, pretty neat. They had a lot of VR type, type setups. Um, and just, just need to see what's going on in that particular realm. And lastly, we got our draft for the D E N I audit today. Uh, it's a little rough. Will and I have some work to send, to send back. Uh, the data is all good. Um, but being a company that works throughout the United States, they use different language than we use in Massachusetts. So we've gotta do some, some cleanup. Uh, on things like that. So we're gonna work with them to try to polish that up and hopefully be able to get that out uh beginning of May-ish. Second week of May.
Aside from that, any first impressions?
Um. It's both surprising and not surprising.
Okay.
Is, is how I would put it. So um, surprising, some of the numbers surprised me Grafton specific. But wouldn't surprise me on a national trend level. Um, I think that uh, you know, some of the things I was happy to see was job satisfaction levels that are. Just kind of the baseline questions of a DEI audit, um, as well as um, you know, how safe do you feel in your workplace? Uh, do you, do you feel like equity is an issue? Um, it's, it's interesting and, and, and I think. We'll discuss this more in detail, but I think it's interesting to ask a group of non-minorities whether they feel that. Diversity is a problem for them in the workplace. Eh, eh, you know, if ninety percent of your workforce is Caucasian, then that number's. Gonna probably be ninety percent. Um, and so we have to, we have to look at that data through the lens of. What we currently have for um, a minority workforce and. Whether all of that data makes sense to, to use as your, as your springboard, if that makes sense.
Sure. Sure.
Um, so, but, and, and it's also interesting, because we've got department-specific data, not municipal departments so much, but police, fire, municipal center, uh, library, um, and schools. Um, but it's kind of interesting to see those different um silos that exist, and, and the lens of diversity that each one would, would look through. Um, so, it, it's gonna be good, I, I'm excited to, to uh take what we can from the data and, and make some changes here to, to implement some uh, some better practices.
Great, that sounds well worth it.
Yeah, yeah, it, it is, we, I only looked at it for thirty minutes today, so I'll have more in-depth as we move forward. Um, and then Main Street update, so folks have been asking what's going on with the Main Street project. Um, so the Fisherville Terrace uh project that is up on the hill off of South Main Street with the drainage issues, if you recall, that drainage work just started today. Um, and that is independent of the Main Street work, um, so they, they have to get that done before the state comes through, um, the contract for the rest of the project, um, they should be uh, the, the timeline I was given was any day, so they are mobilizing, they had projected not starting uh for another couple of weeks due to winter conditions, and just the general climate of Massachusetts, but uh, you know, it's been pretty nice, and so they're gonna, they're gonna get a early jump. Um, that project is probably still on track for late summer uh into the fall for final completion, which is the original timeline that was discussed.
So they're removing all the trees that they did in kind of South Grafton Elementary, that's for the drainage, not for the Main Street.
I believe so, yep, um, I, I will double check that, just to make sure I'm not erroneous, but that's my understanding, in that location, yes. Um, and then there's a whole bunch of retaining wall work and work in front of some of those, those people's homes. Um, and that, that should start up mid to late May, depending on schedule, so um yeah, you're gonna start seeing a lot more work down there again. Um, just one more year to get through, and I think it's gonna be a, a beautiful end result.
So largely, we're looking to wrap that up this year.
Oh, yeah, yep, eh, exactly, the one other thing I did not put in here um is that there is um some construction work done around some of the memorials, war memorials that we have down there. Um, that is all slated to be done before Memorial Day, uh, so the, the Perkins, who is the contractor for the state, is well aware that there's observances that take place, um, and that that needs to be a priority, and, and they've told us that they'll, they'll be able to wrap that up. That's all we got.
Awesome. All right, uh, on the correspondence, does anybody have any correspondence they wanna talk about? We don't have any resignations, anybody here for public comment?
Cassidy here?
Sure.
Oh, thanks. Back is killing me.
Ed Prisby, twenty-five Danielle Drive, um, so this is the second time I've come to conference today to talk about the warrant article about affordable housing. And the second time no one's been here to talk about it, I understand um that Nancy Patoni was at Fincom and the, the week following, she was supposed to be there, I wasn't able to meet that one. Um, but I just wanna say to you guys, as Matt knows, um, it used to drive me nuts when something would come before the board that was ostensibly a priority of the town, and the board would be silent on it at town meeting, and that happened in twenty fourteen with the override, where, again, you know, ostensibly education is a priority in the town, and nobody was willing to publicly support the override. It happened again in twenty twenty, um, I would suggest to you that this particular article is again a place where this board needs to exhibit some leadership here. Um, you know, the trust has existed since two thousand and seven. It has, every single time it's been in this conference room, faced any number of obstacles to get affordable housing built in Grafton. Try as it might, um, the idea that replacing it with something nebulous, something else that doesn't yet exist, uh, i- is, is both naive and foolhardy. The trust exists by creature statute, and it is somewhat controlled by this board, whoever gets on it, you know, gets appointed by you guys. It's funded by the Community Preservation Act, overseen by the Community Preservation Committee. Replacing it with anything else is replacing it with something where it could exist for a moment, it could exist for a year, it could exist for a day, who knows? And it would have to have an amazing private funding source, because it can't get CPA funds. So dismantling the Affordable Housing Trust, it would be a death knell to the efforts of public interest in affordable housing across the town, which is unfortunate. A third of Grafton residents presently are housing insecure, meaning a third of Grafton residents are presently paying more than thirty percent of their take-home income for housing needs. Add on to that, people who would just like to live lives without wondering month to month where they're gonna be, that's not even housing insecure, that's just life, right? It used to be that Grafton was a town of about ten thousand residents twenty-five years ago or so, and during the eighties and nineties, it went through an enormous housing boom. If you look at the data that the Massachusetts Housing Partnership provides, and it's right on their website, Grafton basically shut down housing production after two thousand and ten. And since then, we've been kind of plugging along, a few developments here, a few developments there. And as a result, the people who moved into town in the eighties and nineties and bought into an economy where you could get twenty-eight hundred square feet of a colonial for two hundred thousand dollars, now see their property values at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? And an entire generation of people has been priced out. For the first time ever in Massachusetts, thirty percent of the homeless population is families with kids. Now, when I was growing up, well, I understood the homeless population was, well, you know, those are people that are unfortunate, maybe they've got mental health needs, whatever it is. But the kids with the families? You know, those are people that are priced out the bottom, it's not that they're not working hard enough, it's not that necessarily that just they don't have social services that could help them. These are families that have been priced out of the bottom of the housing market, because we got no place to put them. Because all we're doing now is we're building bigger homes, and why are we building bigger homes? Because that's what's economical for developers. Because the land's expensive, because we've got, that's how we've got it zoned, single-family zoning is exclusionary zoning. We talk a lot about the flag and the seals on the flag and what that means symbolically. Actually speaking, if you're looking for social justice, if you're looking for economic justice, if you're looking for environmental justice, higher density developments are where you want to be. It's easier to fit a hundred and sixty units on six acres of land, for instance, than it is to find a hundred and sixty acres of land to put single-family houses on, and it permits economic diversity in your town. We had the DeCaucus Study, the EDC Commission back in twenty sixteen, one of their findings was, and underrated, we never talk about it, Grafton needs more workforce housing, and again, try as we might, we had GSX right up on Pine Street. I'll tell you, until I see a shovel in the ground, I never believe it's actually gonna happen. You know, those guys are going through some tough times, as a lot of construction firms are, but the only consistent advocate for affordable housing in this community is the Affordable Housing Trust. And right now, we're on the verge of twenty-five Worcester Street of providing for senior housing. I hope that GSX can come through on up the street, we're gonna underwrite those guys. You take that away, there are hundreds of units that we could lose by taking away the Affordable Housing Trust, so I hope that when town meeting comes, that this board will advocate for the trust and publicly state that this is a goal of the community to provide for this kind of housing for that kind of economic need, and for this population that so needs it, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prisby.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone on Zoom or anybody else in the room that would like to speak to public comment?
No hands on Zoom.
Okay, uh, we have no meeting minutes and no reason to go into executive session, so I can take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, declare the motion carried, good night, everybody.